We have everyone, could we do a roll call please?
Did you want to call the meeting to order?
Uh, yeah, we'll call meeting to order at 5:32, roll call please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Hi.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Here.
Councilmember Sander?
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Here.
Mayor Terry?
Here. Think we got a quorum? I'm getting used to that, reading off the expanded agendas now. Clerk, will you read the television announcement please?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, January 20th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, January 23rd at 6:00 p.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the pledge of allegiance. Like to ask our city manager Cyrus Sappar to lead us, considering it's only him and Stacy, I think, in that room right now. And then I will ask members of the audience and council to remain standing and we'll have an invocation by Andy Gee, Gee, I believe is how I pronounce it, with River City Christian Church.
Okay, please join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the states.
Andy, that's an unbelievable picture.
Just, just a few years ago.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Hey Andy, get going, gotcha.
All right, thank you. Father God, we, we face a new year, new mayor, new leadership, new appointed staff and officials. And with this new year comes new goals, new projects and programs and wonderful new opportunities for our city. At this time, as we look ahead, we also look back and are thankful for the past accomplishments, our past leaders, officials and staff who achieved just great successes and set the groundwork for today for Rancho Cordova. But Father, we acknowledge that we have challenges with the pandemic, its effect on the economy, our infrastructure, supply chains, a huge effect on population, businesses and nonprofits, not to mention industries, especially healthcare. Most importantly, and not last, but not, not least, the effect on education, our teachers, our students and our parents. So Father, I ask for blessings on our leadership as we make decisions. Father, give them wisdom. In Second Chronicles, in the Bible, King Solomon himself prayed to you and said, "Give me wisdom and knowledge that I may lead these people." And so I ask for wisdom and knowledge, wisdom and knowledge for the leadership and staff and the team here. Bless this city, bring us unity in any times of divisiveness. Bring us trust in our leadership, especially in times of uncertainty. And God bless this meeting and all its participants. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. For those who don't know or don't remember, Andy was part of our winning first All-America City team.
We make the magic.
You betcha.
On a bicycle.
Very genuine.
Thank you very much for that. Moving on to item 5.1, presentations and introductions of new employees. Got a few here, but I guess we're gonna go to Russ first, right? Here he is.
Good evening, Mayor Terry and council members. Russ Ducharme, Neighborhood Services Manager, here to introduce a few new employees that we have over here at Neighborhood Services. Two of the four new employees will be announced tonight due to unforeseen circumstances. Code enforcement officer Heather Cook and animal service officer Kristi Acuna will be introduced at a future meeting. But first, I'd like to introduce our new customer service representative, Christina Colonello. Christina has been with us for about six weeks. She's gonna be helping our admin team, processing our online requests, phone calls and walk-in customers for both our code enforcement and animal services cases and other related issues. Christina has a very diverse background in customer service and is fitting in really well with our team here. At this time, I'd like for Christina to introduce herself and tell you a little bit about her background and experience.
Oh, Tina, no, no, you're on mute, but we're not getting audio.
Oh, I can, she's in the other office, let me go grab her.
Okay.
Okay, now I'm here.
You're gonna wanna turn the mic off for that other one, or the speaker off for the other one.
I apologize. So I have been here about six weeks and I'm loving it. The public sector's new to me. I've been in private sector most of my job career in customer service. And what I really, really enjoy the last six weeks, and it probably took two days, but I feel like my work family is my real family. And, and I really mean that. Everybody's been welcoming and helpful and just really, just willing and eager to help me out and I really, really appreciate it. So I know I landed at the right place.
Awesome. Well, welcome to the team.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I believe Russ said the other new hires were gonna be announced at a later time. Does that sound right?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to public comments. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference or telephone. If you want to make a public comment via teleconference, please use the raise, actually, this is backwards, but if you're in Zoom, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of the screen. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by, will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comment?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment via email. And I am looking to see if there are hands that are raised via Zoom. Give me just a moment. There are no hands that are raised via Zoom. And there is no one in the council chambers this evening because we are virtual meeting only.
Thank you, yeah. Maybe should've said this at the beginning of the, the meeting, just for, for the public's sake. I believe it was the county health directive was updated about two weeks ago, essentially banning public meetings from being in person due to the COVID outbreak. And that will be in effect for at least the next 30 days from, from the beginning of that directive, I believe. And we'll give the public, obviously, an update if any of those things change in the next 30 days. With that, we'll move on to council reports and we'll start with Councilmember Gatewood.
Thank you, Donald. So mine are pretty quick. Baseball season has officially started. Thank you, David, for all you do at RC. It looks like an amazing year of football. I met, one second. Bad computer, not used to doing this on the Zoom.
What, are you trying to share your screen or something?
No, I'm not trying to look up my notes that I typed out so that I could tell you what all the stuff I did. Lots of exciting economic development stuff going on in the city right now and I have gotten my schedule for the library commission and that's it. Short and sweet, thank you.
We will move on to Councilmember Pulipati.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I attended the Elk Grove School District two-by-twos along with Mayor Donald Terry. We talked about the increase of Omicron in the city and if there is a, what the school district is doing about it, is there any possibility of schools shutting down or virtual classes? But we, we were told that, you know, that school is taking all precautions to maintain the sanity for the school, the, the, what is it called? I forget, anyway, they're maintaining the school, you know, disinfecting the school and, you know, maintaining all, all the social distancing precautions. And so they have not seen any school closures in sight. So they're very confident that they can maintain what's going on and don't see any closures in sight. We talked about the busing situation from South Rancho Cordova to Pleasant Grove and the middle school in Elk Grove, given that there's a lot of kids still not able to get on the bus on time and they're spending long hours waiting for the bus in order to get back home. Again, this is to do with the bus driver shortages and the school district is working really hard to get more drivers on and they're paying, again, the highest in, in the area. They have an app also where the kids can, should scan. When they scan their bus passes, the parents will be notified that they got on the bus. So this is again, an announced, public announcement for all parents to make sure that the kid is scanning that badge when they get on the bus to know about when their kid is getting home. They are working on this and I've still requested the school district to try to come on to council sometime to get, make an update on the busing situation. And since they're still working with the union on this, they've requested more time to come to council to give an update. Then myself, Mayor Donald Terry and Vice Mayor Linda Budge attended the kite festival hosted with city, the Community Enhancement Fund with Sacramento Telangana Association and the Association of Greta Sacramento. They had, they handed out nearly 300 kites. It was a wonderful turnout. Though the festive, the festival that they were celebrating was San Kranti, which is basically the end of the winter season and start of like, you know, brighter days and longer days. And the reason they fly kites is so that they come, people come out and enjoy the sunshine and get more sun rays. And Sunday was actually a wonderful day for everybody to come out and, you know, enjoy the beautiful weather. Would've been Saturday or maybe today, I don't know how it would've been, but Sunday was a wonderful day for everybody and there was a great turnout. So thank you for that. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Sander?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Limited number of engagements in the, in the past week, but some, some important ones. Glad to hear the kite festival went well. I was actually coaching at that time, I was hoping to get over there, but I'm glad we were, we were covered for that event. I'm really glad that we can host things like that in Rancho Cordova. It really adds to uniqueness of our community and I, I appreciate that on a number of levels. So the Rancho of Athletic Association met last week and all of our leagues are reporting really nice, positive results, all of our youth sports leagues. And it's exciting for them to see them bound, bound together and working towards a common future purpose. I think their next steps are going to be a strategic plan that sort of encompasses three to five years of, of growth in their various leagues and what steps are necessary to accomplish that as a group. It's, it's pretty exciting. It causes some of them to have to step up their game. For example, with how they're advertising online or how they're presenting themselves to their website. And it causes others to have to help those that are taking a step up. So it's really a remarkable collaboration, I'm really happy to, happy to see happen. Community council board also met last week. I'm chair of the community council board and we, we have, as usual, our hundreds of events basically scheduled for Rancho Cordova this year. It's an amazing lineup, once you see it. I think the preliminary schedule is probably out there on the community council website and you will all be getting a booklet, which I can't lay my hand on right now, it's the idea book for this year. Where did I put that? Anyway, it's a wonderful little book that sort of lays out the big events and the small events that are happening in a given year. And I'm sure you and the council will be a recipient to one of those soon. They also are looking at some strategic planning and the bigger, sort of a bigger plan for three to five years, that sort of a timeframe. And I'm excited about the, the growth potential there. We've seen what's happened in the arts, we see what has happened in, in other areas. We see some areas that need remediation and probably a retread. For example, our historical society needs some sort of a reboot. But all those things are up and people are really energized and I think the end of the COVID era is, is upon us and people can feel that edge. So that's, that's a good thing. And then finally, where I spent most of my time in the past two weeks, at least on behalf of the city, was at the Consumer Electronics Show in Las Vegas. So some of you may have heard about it while it was going on. All sorts of interesting things were debuted there. There was a BMW that changed colors, for example. Driver could adjust using an app or a setting in the car what color their car was. Pretty amazing stuff. It was not well attended, I think. I think their usual attendance, first time I've ever gone. And I did so on behalf of the National League of Cities. But the attendance was probably 40,000 people instead of 180,000 people. But about 90% of the exhibitors were still there, including some amazing things. There is an entrepreneurial area with, where literally there are 700 startups or something near a startup set up pitching their idea. And they're pitching it to the larger companies who are there and venture capitalists and investors and potential partners and the press. It is just an amazing event. The purpose of me being there for the, for them, paying, basically CES invited me through NLC to attend that, was to look at the technology they have that is applicable to cities. Some of it frankly is so far out there, you could certainly imagine it working. I'm just not sure how long it'll take to become practical. And I'll give you an example. We all have LiDAR, at least most people have LiDAR in their car. It's like warns you if you're gonna hit something, right? That beeping sound or lights or whatever. So it's a low, it's a version of radar. Well, they have these LiDAR systems available that can do a 3D image of a larger area. So imagine a busy intersection. You put a LiDAR set up on one, one pole in the corner, it would do a 3D image of that intersection and identify all the objects in it. So for example, that's a sports car, it's going fast. We have to prepare for that driver to perhaps drive too fast here. That's a kid on a skateboard. This is what you might expect from someone on a skateboard entering the intersection. Here's a stroller. Here's an older person based on their gait and how fast they're walking. Here's a kid on a bike. These are, you know, the probable things that they can do. And you can sort of see it, identify all these objects with like a real-time probability associated with what that, what it thinks the object is. And I just saw, interestingly enough, from CES exhibit, I think now on the ground and in use in the UK, with something called the litter cam. And it uses very similar technology to identify when a car threw something out of a window, take a picture of the license plate. And in the UK, they like automatically send a ticket to the, to the driver for littering. It's a pretty amazing thing. But the graphic, if you can just imagine the litter coming out of the window, a little box surrounds it in the computer's analysis and says, oh, 98% chance that's litter, right? As it falls, as it falls to the ground. So there's tech like that out there that is, that's just one example. I've probably got 20 of those. It's gonna be really interesting to see how it, how it rolls out into, for example, the Vision Zero strategy that this president, previous president and all of us in transportation have been hoping for, for a while, where we try to get to zero pedestrian and cyclists and, and driver deaths in a jurisdiction. And we know we did not have a good year last year in Rancho Cordova on that front for a couple of reasons, I suppose. Alcohol not being the, the smallest of the reasons. But there's really interesting stuff coming. And so I will probably attend CES again. And I may even suggest that someone, for example, our, our transportation staff might wanna attend with me as staff. They do allow that to, to occur. So that is my report.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Budge?
David, I think that sounds fantastic. Because you're absolutely right. We had an important, a very sad accident recently where the RCPD has a 3D camera and they're trying to recreate what happened in the intersection. And so if there were LiDAR up there, they'd have a picture of exactly what went wrong that, that ended in the result that it did.
Yeah, it captures everything in three dimensions of how fast an object is moving and what it thinks it is. It's really remarkable.
But I, I think we would all vote for the litter police. Good idea. So on a transportation note, Regional Transit Met, a significant improvement is about to kickstart. They're about to start the double track from the Sunrise Station to Folsom, which will benefit everybody and has been looked for for a long time. Siri, I love your idea about the Elk Grove School District scanning the kid passes when they get on the buses. Because there are still a lot of kids in SAC City Unified and several other school districts who ride the bus on a routine basis and that would really be a great thing to, for, a great, great kind of a technology for regional transit to have. RT, there's no question that RT runs on its relationship with its four unions. And right now, the unions are asking for additional protections for the employees. And Regional Transit is actually, in, in that context, is really very nimble in making sure that they have up-to-date practices, enough protective equipment for their drivers, incentives for people to, to continue to drive, making sure that the people who are able to drive feel that they are valued. A lot of things like that. So they're, again, they're still working really hard to, to make sure that their relationship with their unions is very positive and that it supports moving people around their service area. And David, this will ring a bell. We now have an ad hoc committee to discuss the membership and voting structure on regional transit. Shades of, what was that? 18 years ago, 17 years ago. They changed the voting structure. It, unfortunately, it still supports the city of Sacramento and the County Board of Supervisors in terms of decision-making. And so this ad hoc committee is going to try to come to a quick resolution of a more equitable agreement. On a bright note, the Florin RT parking lot is going to host the annual tech festival on the 29th of January. And then finally, I want to, second series comments about the kite festival. It was really lovely. And the pictures of Donald and his kids all flying the kites are just wonderful. They really, they're really good at that. I had my hands full with the dog and so I was not flying a kite. But, but there were so many people there. Congratulations to the organizations for, for having such wonderful attendance. And it was really lovely. I learned something about fighting kites, which I did not know even existed. But it seemed to be the popular kite of the day. So, oh, and Siri gave me an explanation of the engineering behind the fighting kite. So my husband, the civil engineer, thought that was interesting too. That's my report.
Thank you. Siri, did, did we mention that we, we did discuss Elk Grove Unified, maybe partnering with RT?
I did not. No, I did not.
So one, one solution that, that the city is at least exploring, working with maybe some of our other school district partners. Linda, to your point with the four unions, that RT, turns out that the union that represents bus drivers at Elk Grove Unified is the same union that represents bus drivers at RT. And so there may be an opportunity to, to look at some additional routes from Rancho to Albionni and Pleasant Grove and back. Really in the, in the early stages of the conversation. But it's something that we're at least looking to see if there's a way for us to maybe assist or to work with Elk Grove to, to solve some of their, their busing issues.
Donald, that makes a lot of sense, given that Elk Grove recently joined Regional Transit. So instead of having their own separate bus system, they're now part of RT. Makes a lot of sense.
A lot. I'm not sure they're gonna go there with it, but I, I think maybe augmenting with, with, you know, folks that are out sick and other things like that. I will say that the superintendent did say that they are now averaging over 100 employees out every day. And that's, that's, that's all staff. My wife is also a credentialed teacher and is on the Elk Grove Unified sublist. And I know just, just from the emails she's getting that they have anywhere from 80 to 90 subpositions a day right now. So we're seeing this across every industry, obviously. But Elk Grove is up, is, you know, it's the biggest school district in, in this region and they're, they're averaging over 100 people. So it's, regardless of what was the struggles two months ago, in the middle of a pandemic where people have to quarantine when they get sick or they get exposed and they get tested positive, it's a monumental struggle right now for all of those services. I will say my, just, the, the conversations around youth sports. My son did his tryouts over the weekend. It sounds like that went very, very well for all involved. And we're looking forward to a, a great new season.
He was a beast out there. A beast. He was a beast out there.
I attended the SDA meeting last week. We elected Bobby Singh Allen of Elk Grove as the new chair and Rich Desmond as the new vice chair. That went a little out of order and it took a few, few votes to finally get there, but that's, that's who's going to be the chair this year. We just kicked off our first CAP to CAP meeting. CAP to CAP supposedly is going to be in person in DC in May, I believe. Registration's already open. I, again, am chairing the community resources team. So if you're interested, sign up soon. I did chair my first meeting for the SAC Children's Museum. If you know of any good potential board members, people that can raise money, please send them my way or Sharon's way over at the Children's Museum. The museum is staying open through the pandemic. They, they haven't had any issues as of yet. But as you all probably know, their target audience is about two years old and their average is about three. And so that's obviously a population that cannot be vaccinated. So it is a bit of a tough place to, to provide those services to that, to that age group. So yeah, but they're, they're plugging away. And then, yeah, I wanted to just echo what everybody said about the kite festival over the weekend. It was great, it was, it was fantastic weather. It was, and, and it was very, very well attended. My kids had a, had a ball doing it. And Neil, who is another engineer, explained to us the dynamics of how you tie the kite and everything and we were able to get it up and, yeah, get some great photos of the kids and everybody. But it was really well attended. I was, I, I, I will say, I was very surprised that that many people came. And it was a very diverse group and I appreciate the Telangana Association for putting it on, but it was not just their members there. There were a lot of, my neighbors came down with their kids and rode their bikes down there and it's about a mile from my house anyways. But it was, it was very, very well attended and it was a great event and I hope they do it again. it again. And with that, we'll move on to, uh, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, with COVID being, uh, the top, the hot topic nowadays, uh, we have also been affected by it as many members of our community and businesses. So we have been working with Sacramento County and, uh, other healthcare providers to see if we could, uh, hold as many vaccination clinics as possible. Um, we today, the county had, uh, one that had organized at the United Methodist Church. And next week on, um, Wednesday, uh, January twenty-sixth, we have one planned at the city hall from three to seven PM. Uh, this is, we will also be using this opportunity to provide some, uh, PPEs to the community, members of the community and our businesses. We have, um, hand sanitizers and ninety-five masks. Uh, we've also been able to acquire some test kits that, uh, we will make available to, uh, members of our community. So flyers have gone out, so please, uh, make sure that if you feel or think that somebody, uh, can benefit from this, uh, that they make the appointment. Give people, this is going to be a contactless, a contactless event. So, uh, um, appointments are needed. Uh, the other thing I wanted to point out that we have, uh, our, earlier this month, we opened our small business and nonprofit grant applications. The application period closes this Sunday on January twenty-third. So please make sure that if you know of a business or, uh, or nonprofit that can take advantage of this grant opportunity, that they submit before the deadline. And last thing I wanted to say that we have, uh, also, we're planning a, uh, city council work session on January twenty-fifth next week. And tentatively, the, while the agenda has not been finalized by the two topics that we would have on that day, uh, tentatively are the mobile home park rent stabilization discussion. Uh, we plan on bringing the draft ordinance that the city council had directed and receive further input from, uh, from members of the community. We also, the other topic that, uh, we hope to present to you, the planning applications on that day and, uh, begin the process for appointment of planning commissioners. We just wanted to give you that heads up. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar items. Consent calendar items, consists of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. Uh, first, do we have any public comment on the calendar?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment, um, for the consent calendar via email, and there are no hands raised by Zoom or telephone.
Okay. Do we have any, anything?
I'll move the consent calendar.
I have a motion, I have a motion by Sander, a second by Budge. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, Vice Mayor Budge?
That's okay.
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Hi.
Okay. Calendar is adopted. Um, moving on to consent public hearing items. Do we have any that need, oh, no, we don't have any. Never mind. We don't have any public hearing items and we're moving on to the, right. I didn't miss anything. Yes, okay. Uh, so we're moving on to regular calendar items. Uh, we'll start with, uh, item twelve-point-one. Um, Darcy, are you taking this or is this MICA?
This would probably be, I'll see it, Tony.
Oh, there we go. I see. Adam, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Darcy will kick off the presentation and then I will jump in, uh, in the middle of it for you. She'll be joining the discussion now.
Can we move approval?
Um, and, and if you'd like to proceed, um, if she's having any trouble logging on, I can take the presentation in her stead if she has difficulty logging on if needed.
I'm moving them over. You were, it was Darcy and do you, okay, got it. She's moved over.
And Russ.
Okay, thanks.
Linda, were you asking to dispense with the presentation and just move the item? Was that what it's?
I know. I asked if we can move approval.
I mean, legally, you, I mean, you know, according to Robert's rules, you can do that. We don't tend to have a habit of dispensing of presentations, but.
Well, I'll look to Adam for that one.
So I certainly think that, uh, it would be helpful to have a, a bit of discussion on the record on this, given, given the, its nature. Um, but we can certainly ask staff to move through it as Mr. Cooley would say, with alacrity.
That's good, Adam. Thank you.
There's an SAT word.
Of course, except there isn't an SAT anymore.
There is.
Brought to us by your former colleague.
Yes.
Are we ready?
We're ready. Darcy, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Terry, members of the council. Darcy Clark with the planning department. Um, tonight you have an urgency ordinance for a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of electronic cigarette retailers and electronic cigarette lounges and vapor bars. I lost the presentation. Here we go. Next slide, please. Quick background, uh, July twenty-twenty, uh, there was a discussion in front of the council regarding the various, um, topics related around tobacco, including e-cigarettes and flavored tobacco products. At that time, um, it was thought that the federal government would be passing additional legislation regarding, regarding flavored tobacco. So, um, council opted to not move forward at that time with any sort of ordinance changes to wait and see if anything happened. Um, today, there have not been any additional legislation that has been passed. Um, yet the use of these types of products is, um, on the rise. Next slide, please. Quick statistical data, four-point-three-one million American middle and high school age students, um, in two thousand and nineteen during a thirty-day period used some sort of flavored tobacco product. Um, those products are listed on the slide in front of you, which includes flavored e-cigarettes, menthol cigarettes, uh, cigars, hookah and flavored pipe tobacco. Next slide, please. So the purpose of the urgency ordinances tonight, um, is based on a few things. Um, there's various studies out there that have found that there's various toxic chemicals within these substances, including antifreeze. Um, these are potentially dangerous, although we don't know all the long-term effects, um, of these types of uses. Additionally, um, this provides an ability to reevaluate the use, um, of zoning to reduce access of these types of uses to children and youth. Um, so based upon various published articles which were attached, um, just, just attached a few of them to the staff report, but there's hundreds of them out there. Um, menthol products increase the appeal of tobacco to youth. Um, it masks the unpleasant flavors of the tobacco. It also becomes more addictive and harder for them to quit. Um, so at this time, um, the city does have various e-cigarette retailers and we have a few lounges and vape bars that are operating within the city. We anticipate, um, some additional requests for similar businesses in the immediate and foreseeable future. Next slide, please. I will turn this slide over to Adam.
Thank you, Darcy. Um, and, uh, I, I just note that, uh, this is actually pursuant to six-five-eight-five-eight. The city council can adopt actions such as this to protect against, uh, uh, threats to the public wealth, health, safety and welfare. And this action here tonight requires a four-fifth vote. It would remain in effect for forty-five days. You would then have the opportunity for staff, if we had not completed our work, to bring back a permanent ordinance to, for you to extend this, uh, one time for up to a year. Uh, we would expect that we would complete our work certainly within that time, but then you would have the opportunity potentially to extend it up to, uh, one year in addition. Um, but again, this would, um, uh, establish, give the city the opportunity to adopt regulations that address this immediate threat and would provide, um, a, a reasonable opportunity for us to also work with and consult with affected businesses and other interests. Next slide.
Just a real quick summary. Um, these are the regional jurisdictions that currently prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco. Most recently, uh, Sacramento County passed their ordinance amendments last week. Um, and then other notable jurisdictions within the state that also ban it. So statewide, we have over eighty jurisdictions that ban the flavored tobacco because we see a rise on our surrounding jurisdictions prohibiting these. Um, that's why we're receiving, anticipate to receive additional inquiries for opening up new establishments here in the city. Next slide, please.
Darcy, can you, can you say that again? The, the, the need for the urgency ordinance and for the temporary moratorium is because, because the county started to adopt, or because the county adopted, we're seeing applications coming here?
Not necessarily. It, it's, they recently passed their ordinance amendments last week, but we have seen increased inquiries within the city over the past several months.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, so with that, we, um, are recommending to adopt the urgency ordinance, um, as presented before you this evening and in your staff report. Um, the action is exempt from CEQA, so there's nothing additional needs to do on that end. Um, and with that, that concludes the presentation and we can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Darcy. Um, first, any questions for staff? Okay, here and now, do we have any public, actually, I have, I have one question. I just want to understand exactly what we're trying to do. So it's a temporary moratorium that would go into effect when, Adam? And then the second question would be, um, is, is this moving us along to adopt the permanent ordinance?
Sure. I'd be happy to answer that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Y-yes, this would go into effect immediately. Um, this would stop the approval, but not the processing of permits. Um, uh, the law requires that we can't stop the processing of any permits that would be subject to this moratorium. But what we would then have the time to do is look at the overall regulation and see that it's up to date. And then we will, um, it, so it doesn't move us technically forward to adopting a new regulation, but what it does do is prevents businesses to, from rushing to, uh, apply for insecure building permits or other permits, uh,
For this.
that would be in violation with a new law that you would adopt that would be more restrictive. By imposing the moratorium, we, we prevent a, rather than you just announcing if, that you are going to do more restrictive regulation that might move businesses in certain areas or that might otherwise restrict them, it allows the city to apply the new and potentially more restrictive laws that you would be adopting to all businesses after this date.
Um, sorry, sorry, to, I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, I just want to understand. So, so there are establishments with, uh, you know, that sell e-cigarettes and their lounges and vapor bars, and you're only, uh, banning or stopping the sale of flavored tobacco? And they have other stuff that they can sell?
Darcy, would you like to address the existing, uh, regulations on, I believe, hookah and other types of?
Sure. So we do have existing regulations within the code for our tobacco retailers. This is all establishments that sell any sort of tobacco, tobacco-related products. Um, so hookah bars, lounges, convenience stores, smoke shops. Um, at this point in time, we're focusing this moratorium on the electronic cigarettes, um, and flavored tobacco products. Um, there are various standards within our code that restrict, um, these establishments in terms of where they can locate, um, adjacent to schools and parks and other places where teens and youths might gather. Um, but to get back to your question, this would focus on e-cigarettes and, um, flavored tobacco. There's other tobacco-related products that could still be sold, uh, within these establishments.
So a smoke shop, I would view maybe fifty percent of its sale is probably, um, flavored tobacco and e-cigarettes, and it would be a big hit to that establishment?
Um, I, I'm sorry, I do not have that type of statistical data to know what our current retailers are selling in terms of percentage of products.
Okay.
And, and I would just add that in, in general, new zoning regulations would apply, um, prospectively, not, not retrospectively. So the, the focus of this, I believe, is at, um, getting new businesses in the right places and subject to the right restrictions, rather than focusing on, um, on essentially removing or, or causing existing businesses to become non-conforming and pushing them out in any way. Is that a fair summary?
Could you, could you repeat that, Adam? So again, I understand not getting new businesses in because of the rezoning, but the existing ones that are already open with, you know, what, what they know, this will not shut them out?
So exist, this would not require existing businesses to move?
But it will stop their sales.
It would, it will, we, again, we are working on writing what the new laws would be. We would start working on writing what the new laws would be, but as zoning, it would, uh, it would determine where new businesses like this can and cannot go.
Okay.
I think, so maybe, maybe here I can, maybe I can restate your question. Um, Adam, does this regulate for current establishments, current smoke shops and retailers of this? Let's leave the hookah and vapor, but we don't have any vapor lounges as far as I know. Uh, we do have one hookah bar, I believe. Um, but for the, the retail establishment, will they be, will this law, or do, and, and do we have the ability to restrict the sale of flavored products for, for businesses that already have a license and have been selling these products prior to today?
Um, so th- this moratorium on the establishment of new retailers is not a citywide ban on the sale of these products. It's a, it's different than that type of regulation.
Okay.
So what's important to remember about this is that we get requests all the time. And I suspect, Donald, that this is a discussion at the, um, Air Quality Management District, uh, frequently. And we have actually been given some awards for, um, trying to ensure that we have clean air around here. But, but basically, we hear from organizations that, um, are really concerned about the attractiveness of flavored, uh, e-cigarettes. There's actually an ad on television about this, uh, the flavors that, like bubble gum, that appeal to the children and encourage them to smoke more, even though there's, um, um, ads out there that, that say that e-cigs are not as dangerous as a normal cigarette. So, but the point of a moratorium, and we've used this several times in the past, Adam probably has a better recollection than I do of how many times and for what issues. But the point of an moratorium is to kind of take a breather, allow legal staff and planning staff to do additional research and decide what would be the best, uh, approach to this for Rancho Cordova to create the safe and, um, clean air and taking care of our children kind of environment that we want here in Rancho Cordova. It simply takes a breather.
Yeah, well, that's an interesting analogy considering the subject.
Um, interesting analogy. I didn't realize I was going there. You're right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, very, very.
Ken was like that.
Yeah. Um, so mildly comment to that, yeah, and you bring up a good point, Terry, as far as the question, but the point of, of this and the reason I brought this matter or requested it, and I, I think Linda did as well, um, was the fact that, you know, regardless of, of, you know, certain establishments and then being able to sell these, these products are making their ways into our children's pockets and into their, and into their lungs ultimately. Um, and, you know, for, for every adult that says that they enjoy these, you know, the, the point of, of these flavors are really to, to attract younger people. They just are. Um, and if people are using these for, you know, uh, to quit smoking, like some may argue that, that these products are, then they don't need to be flavored. Um, you know, thi- this is just another way to get people nicotine. Um, and, and frankly, And, and frankly, most of these establishments prey on the local communities. And that's, you know, surprised, not surprisingly where a lot of these are located. And so personally, I don't want them selling these anywhere in our city, and you can see the multitude of cities across this state and across this region are doing it. But in this case, the item before us is not to do that. It's not to, not for that to take effect. And I believe our original plan was to do this in the second quarter. But I think because of the, the number of interests that we're seeing because other cities are, and, and municipalities are banning this, is that we could end up with a glut of applications here, and we really don't want that. I, I don't want more of these businesses in the city, you know, conveniently located where children can shoulder tap and figure out how to get, you know, their hands on it. And then, you know, in, in the, the grand scheme of things, um, we can't restrict people from buying this off of other, you know, online portals and things like that. So we're just trying to make sure that as much as we can, we can control what we can control and that's in front of us. Any other questions for staff?
Move approval.
Whoa, 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 hang on, hang on. Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor.
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment on this item via email, and there are no hands that are raised in Zoom or by telephone.
And this isn't a public hearing that I got to open anything. Okay, so I've got a motion from Budge and a second from Sander?
Yes.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye. Okay, motion carries, and we'll move on to item twelve-point-two. Discussion and approval of council member appointments to regional boards, commissions and committees. I don't think there's a presentation here. Uh, do we have any, well, do we have any public comment on this item?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment, uh, for this item via email or, um, by Zoom or telephone.
Move approval.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Wait, wait, let, let's, let me just see what they have on there. I thought we were going to change, uh, the cable to me. An alternate, no.
This is, the council, the council has not given any specific directions to staff, changing any of the appointments at this point. The council, last time we discussed it, the council wanted to revisit this in about a month, and that's, our, our plan was to bring it back for further discussions.
Oh, so Siri, you want, uh, Siri and, and Garrett would change places?
I actually had a few changes that I, given to the city clerk, that I thought made it into the agenda. Did they not?
I don't see it on this one.
What I placed in the agenda, Mayor Terry, was what was adopted at the last council meeting was, um, the twenty-twenty-two. I do have written down, um, the changes that you wanted to discuss, but I did not include them in the packet.
Yeah, I wanted them in the packet. Um, the mayor normally makes the appointments and then they're.
No, Donald, we have always agreed.
No, Linda, we've never done it that way. No, we haven't. I, I was told I was on air. There was no discussion about it. Just the same like when I was mayor.
I'm sorry, no.
Garrett to one of them and David moved to another.
That is not one of our council norms.
Yeah, it absolutely is. Um, okay, so then I'll just go ahead and verbally tell you what we were going to do. Garrett was going to move to the connector JPA. Siri was going to take over the cable commission, and I was going to move myself to the alternate for Saicog. Those are the only changes that were going to be made. And this would be the first time we've ever discussed at a public meeting the actual changes since, since I've been on council. Everything else on the, on the agenda was actually going to say the same. Anybody have questions?
Stacy, you might want to restate that.
So let me, uh, acknowledge and, and restate, um, the three boards, um, Mayor Terry, that you mentioned. So with regards to the Sacramento area council of governments, who would you like, who would you like to suggest and recommend be the delegate or the appointee and the alternate?
The appointee staying the same.
Sander.
It would be David.
Thank you.
And I would become the alternate.
Okay. The second committee, um, or appointment would be the Capital Southeast Connector Joint Powers Authority. The appointee and the alternate would be whom?
The appointee would be Garrett and the, uh, alternate would be David. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Siri, I believe, right? I think that's what we discussed.
Okay, so the appointee would be Gatewood and the alternate would be Pulapati. And then third, uh, committee and board that you mentioned was the Sacramento Metro Cable Television Commission, and the appointee would be?
Would be Siri with Garrett as the alternate.
Okay. So those would be three changes, well, the three board appointment changes that are being proposed.
Any questions? Comments, or I'll entertain a motion.
Does anyone have any interest in holding this over to our strategic discussions later on, this month or next month?
No, just, just vote on it.
Uh, is there, is there any chance we could hold it over till we have our strategic discussions as a group and maybe who's going to be best fit there?
I, I'm fine with voting now.
I'm open to the option as well.
You're open to what? I'm sorry, I didn't.
The option of holding if need be.
That sounds like three. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'd like to push it to, I'd like to make a motion to push the assignment till, um, we have our strategic meeting.
Second.
Oh, I have a motion and a second to table to a future council meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember.
Mayor, if I might, sorry, on that, uh, if you could sign out the rules and regulations, roles and responsibilities for each committee before the strategic meeting, that way everybody comes in prepared if they have any questions.
Uh, we, yeah, these are not our boards and commissions. These are, these are their own, they're elected bodies and they have on their own boards and, uh, rules and regulations. So I don't think we're, we have that available to us.
What about roles and responsibilities?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I hear it just being about jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Stacy, we, we may have prepared something like that in the past. Linda, I don't know if you remember, but that sounds really familiar as a.
You did it for me.
All right, Garrett, there we go.
You did it for me.
Maybe you saw it too, I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
Because the only reason I'd like to take it for a discussion, if we have something more to add to this, if we're just going in with the same title, then I, I don't see the need to move to another date.
We can get you some information so you can look at all the jobs and titles, Siri. That's not a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
The, the best sources, the best sources.
Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes. Okay, so we're moving twelve-point-two to some other time. Let's see, council requests for future agenda items. Anybody got any bright ideas? Speak now. Seeing none, uh, we will adjourn to closed session.
This meeting is being recorded.
Oh, yeah, we have to do this. Okay, so with that, we'll move into closed session and, uh, we'll be back in a little while to report out. Have a nice evening, everyone.